I just did this Sunday, so I know. I just did it Sunday. I wanted to ask you about it. I didn't make the time. It's a Sunday. I'm not doing it. I mean, unless it could be an easy thing to say, how do you know that? I didn't do this. I don't want them selling letters if you don't want them selling them.
The only thing that I can do is on that big white paper. I took on some of the topics.
Hey, they said that firm is bad. Well, I mean, it's a small, uh, family. If you can possibly, you know, let them do this. Or the...
One of those shows to sign in the sun. There's, oh, there's another player. I don't know. You think I should have stayed over in Lexington at the soccer game? Sarah was playing.
I was at a meeting and I left to get home in time.
I was gonna find out if I could vote go for him. I wanted to go, so it was zero-zero. Sarah never got on.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I keep talking with my draft.
And now it's just one o'clock. At 1:00, it's same as.
Wrote really good blogs about the guy who was on Facebook. Maybe they're on there, maybe they're on Twitter.
They never hit what they entered. Oh, we didn't know that. We didn't know. That's what I was hoping. Everything else.
By my watch, I have seven o'clock. Would all everyone please rise? Councilman Wilson, would you listen to me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains us, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harrow Holt, would you please?
We bow our heads in this honor of the Lord tonight. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with great expectation and thankfully that you are here to order this meeting. We thank you, Father, for the praise of the Holy Spirit to lead, guide, and direct those in charge tonight. We thank you, Father, that you give all wisdom, guidance, and direction. We pray, Father, tonight, that there is unity in this house, even though we can agree not to agree with the disagreement. We thank you, Father, that your word says that when any two shall agree, Father God, then we walk together in unity. And we just lose unity here tonight in the name of Jesus. Father, we just thank you for what you have planned for Mount Sterling. God, we acknowledge you have good things planned for Mount Sterling. God, I heard before I moved here a long time ago, the Lord, that Mount Sterling was a good place to raise, a good place to raise kids. And I just thank you, Father, that that vision continues, that whomever is in leadership will have that vision and that heart. Because our kids grew up here, Lord, that's the most important asset that this county and this town could ever have, is the kids. Father God, we raised them up in righteousness and in the fear of the Lord Jesus Christ. Father God, we pray tonight that the Holy Spirit is covered on this meeting, giving those an authority and wisdom, Lord, that they need tonight. And Father, we just thank you that we lose peace in this house, we lose joy in this house, and we lose the Holy Spirit in this house tonight. And Father, we just bind anything that is of greed and selfishness, and we lose, Father God, that your purpose and your plan is carried out here tonight. Father, we just thank you right now for what you have in store for Mount Sterling. Father, we just thank you that it is a growing community, that it is a prosperous community. And we just thank you, Father, right now, for the people that you're sending into this community, Lord, to help it to grow and go in the right direction, that it will always bring glory and honor to you and to your name. Father, we just thank you that there is room in this town for growth, and we just thank you, Father, you're sending in business and bankers. And God, we just thank you sending in Godly people. We just thank you, Lord, for what you're doing and what you want to do, and we give you all the praise that you receive.
Thank you for the offer. Okay, uh, office minutes. Motion, Leto, do I have a second? Second amendment, hold members, please.
Lawrence.
Uh.
Kay.
Uh.
Uh.
Dixon.
Uh.
Trimble.
Uh.
Uh.
Financial report.
I just have one. What is box-like networks?
Box.
Box-like, that's our property tax administrator.
Box-like network.
Box.
Okay. Any others?
Steve, I see you got a truck.
Yes.
We got a real expensive bed on it.
What?
Got an expensive bed on it.
Which is gonna last longer.
All right. I'm gonna do something a little different than the agenda calls for tonight. Item number 12, because I think there's a whole lot of interest on that picture of that ordinance. I'm going to move that up to the next item of business. I know that there's been some rumors that you can't talk, you come to the meeting and you won't be able to address. That is not so. When this ordinance is called, after we've received the second, then I will ask for discussion. At that point, anybody can address the issue. Now, in order to do so, we would ask you to come to the podium here, state your name and your address. We would ask you to keep your remarks under five minutes, because we've got a lot of people here tonight that want to be heard. We feel like it's important that they be heard, and we're going to try to accommodate everybody that wants to speak tonight. So be attentive to your neighbors and pro or con, and we will try to get everybody's voice that wants to be heard tonight. Okay, item number 12, Councilman Judy. Second reading of ordinance 7-2012, amending the comprehensive regulatory ordinance for the control, licensing, operation, administration, and enforcement of alcoholic beverages by the drink ordinance number 168-90 and ordinance number 340-99, establishing operating hours for licensed premises by sale of liquor by the drink. And the first reading had times that have been changed from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. to match the state statutes, so let that be noted, and we're changing it. Whereas the city of Mount Sterling wishes to amend said ordinance to allow hotels, motels, inns, and restaurants, which are authorized to sell alcoholic beverages by the drink under KRS 242.185, paragraph 3, to sell alcoholic beverages by the drink on Sundays. All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second amendment total. Discussion.
You know, Mayor, I want to say, if I had my way, everything would be closed on Sundays, like when you were a kid. You know, every commercial retail business.
It goes back to the late.
Yeah, it goes back. But, and when I was a kid even, I remember that, and you spent time, but that's not where society is today and what we're doing here. I mean, alcohol is a legal product. I've had, um, I've had two phone calls and one text against this, and I've had numerous, numerous people on the street saying, "We need to do it, we need to be, you know, we need to be, um, revenue aggressive, we need this," and anything, and the growth that it might bring, the tourism, the tourism. But, um, and one of the things that I want to say before all this gets started is, a few years ago, I said this too. We're not up here to legislate morality. When I took my oath right here, that means I'm separating church and state, and no matter how I feel, that I don't want everything open, I'd love it to be, everything's closed, and we go back to spending family time on Sundays, but that's not what's gonna happen. And I don't see serving drinks in a restaurant setting with a meal is leading to alcoholism, leading to more police involvement, anything else. There's nothing I've seen that says that, so that's, that's just what I wanted to say.
Okay, any else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Melissa Walters, and I live on Houghton in Mount Sterling. I did have an email for you, but rather than email you, I'll email everyone else. I didn't know if you text, but I represent the citizens of this community, of this county, who oppose this ordinance for an increase in alcohol sales on Sunday. And I want to present to you some different statistics, a different approach, that shows how devastating alcohol is on our community. And the first statistics that I had is from the Kentucky drunk driving statistics. This was reported, the most recent data was reported in 2009, and it states that 90% of all drunk driving happens after social drinking. That's social drinking with family, friends, and coworkers. So that's a little different than what you were saying.
No.
Secondly, Montgomery County's population is on average 222,554 approximately. And according to the statistics from Kentucky drunk driving statistics in 2009, per 10,000, 18 people are killed for every 10,000. So we have approximately 22,000 people in this county. That's 40 people a year that's killed. So today, I ask you, can you put a monetary value on that? That's 40 people. Further statistics state that 900,000 people are arrested each year for DUI, DWD. Can our county jails absorb this, the crime, the cost? Those were the Kentucky drunk driving statistics. Well, according to the World Health Organization, there are more than 320,000, that's 320,000 young people aged 15 to 29 that are killed every year, that's annually, that are killed by alcohol alone. They also reported that 275,000 are injured in alcohol-related accidents. That's not killed, that's injury. When you have injury, you have cost. You have increasing healthcare costs. Most of us know that Kentucky's healthcare is Medicare Medicaid, probably 65 to 70%. Who pays for that cost? You and I do. That's 75, 275,000 injuries. The National Highway Traffic Safety just put out a report last year, and their highway safety report said that 17,941 people die every year in alcohol-related collisions. Of those 17,941 people, 40 of those people are our friends and families. So clearly, alcohol, it doesn't pay our judgment. It's the same as a drug. There's no doubt about that. That's been proven. You can see by the statistics, you can see by the deaths. Prescription drugs are legal too. So you brought up that issue about alcohol's legal, so are prescription drugs, but they're used the same as alcohol's abused. And due to that, you can see the number of deaths, you can see injury, you can see the increased disease, increased crime, increased divorce, increased school dropout rates. Just this year, Kentucky was rated among the 10 worst states for women's health. We're in the top 10. You know one of the reasons? Alcohol-related abuse among women. And you know what this leads to? Increased breast cancer, increased cervical cancer, multiple increased diseases, increased risk for dementia. So I ask you each today, as I represent this community and those that are opposed to this, what legacy do you choose to leave behind? Do you want those in this city, in this community, after hearing these statistics, do you want them to remember you as the person who voted yes on the use of alcohol, which ultimately leads to more, it's a gateway, alcohol's a gateway to drugs? That's a gateway to crime, that's a gateway to violence, and all the untoward effects that follow? Or do you want to make a statement today, do you want to leave a legacy behind, that says, "I made a loyal, I made a righteous decision for my family, my friends, and my community"? Our community was just last week named one of the best, one of 100 best communities for young people. Just this past Wednesday, that came out in the paper. That was voted on by America's Promise Alliance. Factors that influenced this decision were student advocates, additional support services in this community. It included five promises. And those five promises that the president and the CEO of America's Promise Alliance, President and CEO Committee said, he said the five promises that we chose, out of 320 communities, from all 50 states, we were chosen because we have caring adults, we have safe places, we have healthy starts for our children, we have effective education, and we have opportunities to help others. So I'm not sure that teenagers using alcohol would fit anywhere in this, but you saw the age of death was 15 to 29. And as I close, I'm just gonna say, our judge executive, Wally Johnson, he said in the paper, that our community leaders are dedicated to making the well-being of our children and young people a priority, and they're striving to ensure that they have the best educational and support services. The paper also said, or the paper also said, that you all were unreachable. I don't know if that's true, I can't imagine that you weren't reachable, but that's what the paper said.
You reached this, didn't you?
I did.
There you go.
I reached this to you that had an email or that I could reach.
I reached it for you.
So, you know, I ask that we won't give up this recognition. You know, by allowing bars to stay open to 2:00 a.m., allowing more alcohol, allowing more drinking, more driving on the streets. And in closing, I just want to attest what you said, Buck. Here's your, here's your proof, okay? In closing, last year, the World Health Organization said that statistics show that cities who approve alcohol sales also consume alcohol at higher rates.
We already have sales.
Right. Like, if we increase the sales, it only increases the alcohol use.
Can I correct one thing? This doesn't have anything about letting bars stay open until 2:00 in the morning. That's not an option. It's from 12:00 to 9:00, only restaurants that can seat a hundred.
1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Only restaurants that can seat 100. It can't be, uh, your C stores or your bars, they won't be affected, they have to be closed.
So let me ask, did you, so you proposed the, you proposed the ordinance, so my concern is, the whole ordinance is proposed on, we're gonna combat drug abuse by the revenue that's generated. So what dollar figure can you give me?
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Where'd you get that from?
Well, many of you all have said you want to add support services by emails, I've read. Many of you want to increase the support services in the community by combating drugs by adding additional police force, by adding additional revenue to the city.
I don't know where you, I don't know where you're coming from.
Well, that come from emails from the city council. And so from this, my question is, what amount of revenue are you expecting to generate?
This revenue, the, the, the main majority of this revenue which will be generated will go back to help the children towards East Walker Park. It doesn't come to city coffers, it goes, it goes to the tourism.
Tourism.
So, I mean, we're, we're trying to do this to get additional restaurants to come in, to maybe give people a few more options if they bring their kids and they come to these, these tournaments out here at the parks. And by doing that, we'll help our tourism, which will help our cities.
Well, I realize that the park is funded also through sales tax. I recognize that, but that doesn't make it acceptable, because if you look at how much revenue is generated from that, what percentage would that be of the city's budget, what percentage is generated from?
It all goes there. It all, we don't get, we don't get anything from this. We're getting liquor tax.
So what's the dollar figure?
They what?
We don't, if it attracts a new restaurant, if it attracts XYZ restaurant out here that only will come because they can serve liquor on Sunday, it's one of their, you know, that we, they told that.
And their several extended.
People will pull off the interstate to have a drink with their fam, not the driver, we hope, we don't see that, but I mean, the people that it brings, and maybe if they pull in this town, they'll spend the night, maybe that's, you know, the restaurant, the restaurant goes to the hotel, to the motel. That is what, this is only from 1:00 till 9:00 on Sunday. Let's not expand this. Don't, we don't, 2:00 in the morning, none of this stuff, we don't.
Okay, well, I'll rescind that statement, because that's what I heard, that I'll rescind that, so.
This is, all this is, and you have to be seat 100, and if you're a, where is it? Read it again. Where, I don't have my copy. Where is it?
I know what it says. So if any restaurant has said that they do not come, because I read the statement that Logan said, and Logan said they were coming, Logan's only expressing interest. They didn't say that it matters to them if they sold alcohol or not. Expressing an interest in a restaurant is different than them saying, "I refuse to come."
No, I'm saying, yeah, I don't, I don't have, I don't have.
I know it's a lot of other individuals that want to.
I don't know anything about Logan's.
I just, I just want to say in closing, that, you know, I know this is a hard decision, and I know that honestly, there should have been a referendum for this, this should have been voted on by the community. This should not. This should not be in your own hands. You all represent us.
That's why we get to vote on it.
Thank you all for giving this opportunity, I appreciate it.
Thank you as well. All right, anybody else?
Kyle Chandler, Paul G. Edwards. I probably got more than five minutes, I'll cut some of it out, since she covered some of it, but I stood at this podium approximately five years ago, and we had this same ordinance with on, and he failed to get a second motion. I would like to ask the question, what all has changed in the last five years that it's worth more now than it was then? Because change is something that I do understand in my life, because my life's changed. I've lived on both sides of this alcohol issue. I have misused and abused alcohol in my life, and now I don't, due to the relationship I now have with Jesus Christ. But I want to know what has changed that's made this...
But I want to know what has changed that's made this so important? We have a brand-new police department. We have a brand-new city. You say the money's just for taxes, or is it just all going to the park? Our parks are right now are probably some of the top in the state, because I've traveled the parks with the baseball teams. So they need that much more money. The one thing that has changed in the last five years is the drug problem. It is the drug issue. And one of the secondary effects of alcohol misuse is drug issues. Alcohol is one of the biggest catalysts for drug use there is.